And annual income. The, we did present as part of our application materials, an extensive affordability plan, which lays out all of the statutory requirements and indicates how this application satisfies those. We will produce 56 market rate units, 24 set aside housing opportunity units, and they will be in the same proportion as the units we propose, 77 one bedroom units and three, two bedroom units are proposed on the site. All of the units, whether they are designated as affordable or market units, will be done to exactly the same finishes. There will be no difference within the unit finishes between the affordable units and the market rate units. To give you an example of the impact of 830G and its ability to reduce rents on behalf of people who qualify, for those people, for a person renting a one bedroom unit and qualifying under the 80% of statewide median income, the rents, including utilities, because the state requires that the cost of utilities be included, is, would be $1,265. For the 60% statewide median income, the rent would be $1,054 per month. For the two bedroom units, at 80%, it would be $1,563, and for the 60% two bedroom unit would be $1,302. These are, obviously, if you're familiar with the rental market in Simsbury or other suburban towns, typical one bedroom unit in new, relatively new apartment multifamily complex will rent anywhere from $1,800 to $2,200 a month for one bedroom. So this represents substantial opportunity for those people who are otherwise closed out of a market like Simsbury to be able to live within this community, and that's the function that 830G was designed to fulfill. And as the chairman indicated, there are a number of rules that apply to 830G, and unless we present a plan that presents a public health or safety matter of concern that can't otherwise be rectified, our require, your typical requirement that we comply with all of your zoning regulations simply does not apply to this application. And that's why on 1.97 acre parcel, you have an 80 unit presentation, something beyond density that would otherwise be permitted. We have been before your Inland Wetlands Commission several times, will be before them again tomorrow night in a continued public hearing. You are, as a commission, are not able to act by virtue of Connecticut general statutes until the Inland Wetlands Agency has issued a decision. So even if we close the public hearing tonight, it would not be appropriate for you to deliberate until you have received an Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission report. We have a timing issue because of the fact that this is a site point approval, you have a statutory obligation to decide this within 65 days of when it was received. That time period will run out in a few days, at the end of this week. I've already provided Mr. McGregor with a letter indicating that we are, as the applicant, are willing to grant this commission an extension through your April 17 meeting to give us an opportunity to finish with Inland Wetlands and then to come back before you with a decision from that agency. And that's-
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Alter, just if we could, just for the record, I have not received that letter yet.
I have not handed it to you, but you have-
(laughing)
You have, you have it in your email. And I will get you a hard copy. The application contemplates the development of 1.97 acre parcel on the easterly side of Hop Meadow Street. You'll notice that it abuts the bike path or the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail. There's also a 2.39 acre piece that is part of the property to be acquired. We propose no development whatsoever on that parcel. It will remain in its current condition along the Farmington River, and so there would be nothing occurring on the easterly side of the bike path with respect to this development. We are, as you can see, an L-shaped property. Our proposal is to locate the building in the southeastern corner of the property, back towards the rear of the property, back towards the bike path. We're about 300 feet back from Hop Meadow Street with our proposed building.
Sorry, Attorney.
Yes, sir.
Can we have a short pause while we get these going forward?
(laughing) I missed the days when we had any-
I think it's just the internet here, it's just-
My speech is so slow.
I think it's just the internet's super slow. I'm just turning around.
It may be.
Yeah.
I'm not getting anything in mind.
Mr. Chairman?
So it's not, it's not moving?
If I could be very clear-
It's, it seemed to be.
We've heard some of this presentation before, and all the documents are available. Seeing this is a public hearing, will the public that lives in Simsbury be allowed to comment tonight?
Yes.
Of course, it's a public hearing.
I'm hoping that the presentation will not take more than an hour. We're all given five minutes.
It's okay. That's enough. Go ahead, continue.
Gotcha.
Thank you. The information over here tonight will be from our project engineer, Seamus Moran, our traffic engineer, Mark Vertucci, and our landscape architect, Tom Grasseffler. And each of them will present elements of the plan that we offer to you in terms of the opportunity to consider it and to react to it. Just to summarize, and I understand we've been through all this before and that you've heard it before, but on the basis of creating a public record for a public hearing, the proposed vessel building is a fully sustainable building, it has roof mounted solar arrays, it is a net zero building. In other words, the residents of the building will never receive an electric bill. All of the electricity is provided within the property. There is a substantial development of high efficiency within the units in terms of air and purification and monitoring, software-enabled housing products, feedback to tenants so that they can make best use of the facilities that are provided for them, nine-foot ceilings with large windows that open and function as full windows. And we just finished with the design review group this evening. They voted three to two to present a neutral recommendation to this board, to this commission. We understand, and they came to understand, that our building, the building we propose, evolves because of its function, and the form of the building really follows the functionality of the building. And I understand that communities like Simsbury and other communities that we work in feel that buildings that come to their community should take on a certain character because of the character that is perceived within the community. We explained to them that in order to produce a building that can sustain itself and be affordable, it has to be a building that is reasonably constructed of first quality materials, and that it is a product, not a specific design build for this particular site. It is a product that's been developed by a vessel over the past three years in order to create an opportunity for this kind of housing within communities that lack the necessary and expected affordable housing for its citizens. We spent some time with both the design board and the Inland Wetlands Agency in terms of the site development. The existing conditions plan that you see tells you that the existing house and outbuildings will be demolished, a number of trees will be taken down, but a number of trees will be preserved. There are some large oak trees towards the front of the property which will be preserved. Those are the ones with red circles around them, the foliage and tree growth that's in the southwestern corner will be preserved, and all of the undergrowth and trees that exist along the bike trail in the area that you see with the red circle will also be preserved to provide further buffering between the building and the bike trail. I'm going to have Seamus Moran come up in a minute and explain the site plan. I will mention a couple of items that have come up since the last time we were in to see you. One is that we now have bear proof dumpsters called out. We talked to our waste haul proposer, and they actually have dumpsters that serve that purpose, and they will be accommodated on this site. We have had a continuing dialogue between our engineer and your town engineer with respect to stormwater management, renovation and discharge. Seamus will update you on that as part of his presentation tonight. We believe that we have reached an accord with the town engineer, yet to be confirmed. And in that regard, it might be better if you keep your public hearing open in order to receive your town engineer's comments with respect to stormwater. You won't have those this evening. With that, I'll ask Seamus to come up.
Excuse me. Good evening, Commission. Thank you for having me. My name is Seamus Moran, a professional engineer in Connecticut, and I work for H&amp;H Engineering Associates out of Mystic, Connecticut. So as Mr. Alter pointed out, we do have an 80 unit building that you can see in the back right corner here, southeast corner. It's a 95 car parking lot, two-way entrance drive off of Hop Meadow. The bike trail is just to the east of us, Hop Meadow is to the west, so the left side and the right side of the plan sheet. 95 car parking lot with six overflow parking spaces, which we don't think we need, but if we have to add more parking, there's room for six additional parking spaces. The dumpster, the pad here, and the dumpsters with the bear resistant enclosures is located in this location here. It's a circular loop drive, so it's easy for fire access and for waste, waste trucks to get in and out of the site. Turning radius template has been placed across the site for those, for those trucks. There's also an emergency egress grass paver to the east here that the fire marshal has asked for, so we've added that to the plan. There is a retaining wall on the north side. The existing grades are on the high side here along the southern property line around elevation 102, which fall down, which dropped down to about 84 right in this location here, about 88 on the right-hand corner, and 95 or so on the left-hand corner. So as you work for your way from south to north, there's a grade differential, so the retaining wall makes up a little bit of that grade differential. On the backside, along the top of that retaining wall, since the last Wetlands meeting, we've added a 36 inch minimum fence along the top of that vinyl fence to block any potential headlight glare going northbound of the, of the property. There's a loading space that you can see in this location here, so I think it's 35 feet long by 10 feet wide, and that's just for loading or unloading, and there's a walkway here and a crosswalk. So anybody loading or unloading can, can pull into this space, access the walk, and get to the front of the building fairly quickly and easily. We do have some snow storage areas shown in the plan. One is in this location here, these parking spaces. We have 95 spaces on the, on the, on the site where 83 are required, so we have a surplus of 10, I'm sorry, 12 parking spaces across the site. So if we were to block off six of these spaces, as well have two of these spaces here, we are still in excess of the minimum required parking spaces for the lot. So we do have a snow storage area here, and in this location here, there's calculations on the plan that show, you know, essentially a 12 inch snowfall would amount to a, I think it's a 30 inch tall mound of snow in those, in those areas, so fairly reasonable. So if, I think that's probably on the site layout, we do have bike racks, I'm sorry, in the, in the far right corner here that you can see. And I believe that's it for the site layout plan. If we can move on to the grading plan now? Oh, never mind. This is, what we're looking at here is the dumpster enclosure, the bear resistant dumpster enclosure. It's a little tough to see with the dark dumpster with the dark background, but this bar essentially makes it so that way it's a, a bear proof enclosure, and that's what's pointed out in this confirmation letter from Paines. I think it's an extra upcharge of $75 a month, and that's, you can see the language right on the bottom here. The grading and drainage plan has been, has been a work, we've been working with the, the town engineer on this plan. What you see here is very similar to what we've kind of started with at the beginning. However, we do have, the way it's been configured is a little bit different. Originally, we had a stormwater basin on the right side here, which has now been moved to the left side based on some of the, the better soils are on the left side of the building. So we do have a small bar retention basin here, which is for the roof runoff. So all of the roof runoff will discharge to this shallow depression, which is a bar retention basin, which will be planted with, with plantings per the water quality manual that have been selected by the landscape architect. All of the runoff generated from our proposed parking lot, everything in, essentially from this point along the road, back to the back corner of the property, will be collected in a series of catch basins, which are routed to an underground subsurface stormwater management system. It's called an ADS StormTech MC 3500 system. What they are is they're, they're chambers, semicircular chambers with a flat bottom that are rounded, so open on the bottom, sitting on stone, and each of those catch basins is routed to an inlet control structure, which directs the stormwater into an isolator row. The isolator row is just one of those chambers wrapped in fabric, and the way that these chambers are designed is that fabric retains sediment and oils and grease and things like that within the chamber, and removes a certain percentage of those pollutants that exceed the water quality manual. For our development, each of these chambers is actually sized to accommodate in excess of the 100 year storm event, which the two-year, the 10-year, the 25-year, the 100-year storm event, what the, what the 100-year storm event means, it's, it's an 8.89 inch rainfall event, so in a 24-hour window. So if there were essentially nine inches of rainfall in a 24-hour window, that constitutes a 100-year storm event, which we don't, obviously don't cut those off. So each of these chambers is designed to treat the stormwater for a 100-year storm event. Once it gets through the isolator rows, it's infiltrated into the ground through the two-year storm event. So any of the runoff through the two-year storm event, which I believe is a 3.3 inch storm event, so a 3.32 inch storm event is all going to be infiltrated, there won't be any discharge to the outlet through the two-year storm event. Beyond the two years, so between the two-year and the 100-year, each of these underground systems is, is metered, the water outflowing from those systems is metered by an outlet control structure, and we designed the system so what's discharging across the property here, the peak rate is no more than the pre-existing condition. So for example, for the pre-existing condition for the 100-year storm event, it's about 10 CFS cubic feet per second. For the 100-year post-development, it's 8.85 CFS, so it's a reduction in the peak rate. So there's less runoff crossing the property to the north for the 10, 25, and 100-year storm events. So for the flooding events, we're showing a reduction of peak rates.
Mr. Chairman, can we ask questions now?
I think it would be better if we didn't. We want to move this on.
I'll try and be quicker with the rest of it.
I've got a note.
Okay.
The last two practices are an infiltration trench here. This is just capturing runoff coming from off the property from south to north. We'll capture that before it gets into our parking lot. We don't want to add off-site runoff into our parking lot, so we're capturing that in a 30-inch wide trench that'll infiltrate into the ground. And the last one is a small collection basin and detention and drywall that, again, allows the off-site runoff to infiltrate into the underlying soil. There is a maintenance plan on the storm, on the grading and drainage plan sheet for each of those practices, which I don't want to belabor and get into it now, but if there are any questions on that, I can certainly get into the, the maintenance of those outlet, of those stormwater management structures. Lastly, and I guess not now, not lastly, second to last would be utilities. There's water and sewer available in Hop Meadow Street. We do have a sanitary sewer line shown here, proposed line coming out of the building in this location. The water line wraps around in this location. There's also a lateral already onto the property, so we'll tie into that lateral. So there is public water and public sewer. We, we do have authority from those local utility companies to connect into the, into the system. Electric will be on the north side here. There's a proposed transformer that'll route around the, around all of the subsurface systems and connect into the, into the maintenance closet in the back, I'm sorry, the front right corner of the building. Soil erosion, sediment control, there's a, again, it works from south to north, so all of the runoff is going in this direction towards the northern property line, so there is a temporary diversion swale shown on the plan, and a temporary sediment trap. And this temporary sediment trap has been sized according to the 2002 Soil Erosion Sediment Control Guidelines, so it's, has a certain amount of volume allowed for sediment and a certain amount of volume allowed for, for stormwater, and that is shown in this location here. This is, this here is a temporary soil stockpile area. We do have catch basin inserts during construction just to prevent sedimentation from getting into any of the catch basin structures. And we do have a silt fence along the northern property line and the eastern property line, which are the down gradient edges of the development, and also a construction entrance. Would you like me to talk? Okay. So for the lighting plan, we do have solar fixtures that are about 16 feet tall, the pole, I believe, is 15 foot seven, and then the fixture on top of the pole is, adds an extra couple inches. So in total, they're 16 feet tall, solar fixtures that you can see kind of the envelopes here. There are nine of them across the site, and they are designed so that way there's no trespass of light beyond our property lines from the onsite, from the, from the site lighting fixtures. So if you see from these numbers on the page, what you can't see is that there's a 0.0 at the property line, I would design the fixtures so that way the, the parking lot is illuminated, obviously most underneath those lighting fixtures, and it disperses evenly, so the lowest spots are, you know, 0.1, so there is some light on the parking lot, but of course, as you get closer to the fixtures, it brightens up. So that is designed for, obviously for safety for the parking, for parking for the residents, and prevents any trespass onto the, across the property line. And I think now we'll move on to Mark Vertucci, who can touch on the traffic report.
I'm Mark Vertucci. I'm a senior transportation engineer at Fussin O'Neil. We're at 146 Hartford Road in Manchester. I'm a registered professional engineer and professional traffic operations engineer as well. We did prepare the traffic study for the proposed development. I want to briefly describe the findings for you here this evening. Again, the site is located on the east side of Hop Meadow Street. The proposed driveway location is approximately 250 feet north of the Powder Forest Drive signalized intersection, so it is out of the influence of the queuing of that traffic signal. There's also bypass width available on Hop Meadow Street southbound. There are two lanes in the southbound direction, so a vehicle waiting to turn left into the site does not block the through traffic, they can get around on the right side. So it's a good location for the driveway. As part of the study, we did analyze that, that driveway intersection with Hop Meadow Street. We also reviewed the traffic signal at Powder Forest Drive as well. So we conducted traffic counts at the Powder Forest Drive intersection back in October of 2022. The counts at that intersection did reveal the peak hours of traffic, the morning peak hour of traffic was 7:00 to 8:00 a.m., the afternoon peak hour of traffic was 4:30 to 5:30. So those are the peak hours that we subsequently analyzed in the study. We did consult with the DOT Planning Division on an appropriate growth, growth rate to use on those traffic counts, as our anticipated design or build year is 2024, so we did grow those traffic counts by six tenths of a percent per the DOT planning recommendation. As far as traffic that will be generated by this site, we did utilize rates published in the ITE Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. The 11th edition is the latest edition, it was just published in 2021, and has a lot of fresh data in it. It is an industry-accepted resource for determining traffic generation. It is the standard of the federal standard, the Connecticut DOT standard, and the Town of Simsbury Engineering Department standard as well. So we used the multifamily mid-rise residential land use code 221, and for the 80 units, it projects we will be generating 30 trips in the morning peak hour of traffic, 32 trips in the afternoon peak hour of traffic. And again, the rates in this manual are calculated based on, the ITE actually went out and counted 30 similar sites around the country, they actually counted similar apartment complexes to come up with these, these actual rates. So this is, this is based on real data. So it is a, is a low generating use. I wanted to point out as well, one thing I did not mention last time, we, we actually went out and counted a similar development in West Hartford, just to confirm these rates were appropriate for this area. We counted the 243 Steel Road apartment complex, which is 190 units, and the rates were nearly dead on with the ITE rates. .43 trips per unit we counted there, the ITE rate was .939 trips per unit. So I know there was some questions on the rates last time, and just, just wanted to point that out, these are, these are solid rates that we're using here. We then went ahead and we conducted capacity analysis at the intersection of Hop Meadow Street at Powder Forest and also the site driveway. So we went, went ahead and we reviewed the background condition, which is the 2024 conditions without the development traffic, and we compared it to the 2024 build conditions with the development traffic. And the analysis, the capacity analysis, as you may know, comes up with a level of service. It's a report card type scale rated from A to F that rates the intersection operation. A is a condition of very low delay or efficient operations, F is a condition of high delay, high, high driver frustration. DOT typically considers level of service D, as in DOG, as the minimal, acceptable level of service. The analysis revealed the intersection of Hop Meadow at Powder Forest operates efficiently at level of service A in all conditions. There's no decrease in level of service as a result of the development traffic, and the site driveway intersection is projected to operate at level of service A for the turns in and for the turns out, level of service B in the morning peak hour and C in the afternoon peak hour. Queuing, I wanted to point out, was analyzed as well, and the southbound queues on Hop Meadow at Powder Forest Drive are projected at 175 feet in the morning peak hour and 220 feet in the afternoon peak hour. As I mentioned, the driveway is located 250 feet north of the intersection, so we do not anticipate any queue blockages from the traffic signal queues. From a safety perspective, we did measure intersection site distances in accordance with DOT criteria in the Highway Design Manual. The site distances measured exceed the 445-foot DOT requirement for a roadway with a design speed of 40 miles per hour. The driveway will provide safe egress- The driveway will provide safe egress for vehicles exiting the site. We also reviewed the latest three years of crash data from the Yukon Crash Repository for Hot Meadow Street within the study area. There were no abnormal crash severities or frequencies reported in the study area, and no crash patterns were identified. We did have one recommendation in the traffic study, and that was to re-stripe the center line of Hot Meadow Street. It is kind of a striped median that is developing there in the southbound direction. So we are just recommending that those, a break in those pavement markings be installed just to indicate the vehicles can turn left in and out of the site driveway. The conclusion of the traffic study, upon implementation of that recommendation, is that the proposed development will not have a significant impact to the traffic safety and efficiency of the adjacent road network. Your staff did review this study. The police department had no comments and concurred with the findings of the study. The engineering department had a couple of comments related to the queues in the sight line, which I described earlier in the presentation. And they had no further comments upon our response to those questions, those comments they had. So they also concurred with the findings of the study. I did want to point out that the DOT District Four Office will be reviewing this, this study as well as part of an encroachment permit application. We do need a permit for the contractor to construct the site driveway in the Route 10 right away, because this road is under their jurisdiction. So they will be thoroughly, thoroughly reviewing this project as well, should you approve it at the town level. One other thing I wanted to talk about, which was the parking. Seamus hit on the fact that we are providing 95 spaces on site. We did also review the ITE guidance on parking. They also have a Parking Generation Manual. Fifth edition is the latest version of that. So we did review the industry standard parking rates. And for this land use, land use code 221, multifamily housing, mid-rise, suburban. The ITE manual projects a weekday peak parking demand rate of .75 spaces per bedroom and a Saturday rate of .77 spaces per bedroom. So that yields the need for 62 spaces for the 80 units. The state statute is one space per bedroom. I should say, yeah, 62 spaces for the 80 bedrooms. And the state statute is one space per bedroom, which would yield 83 spaces. So we are providing 95, so that's 33 spaces more than the ITE rate we recommend. It's 12 spaces more than the state statute. So we are confident that this site will provide ample parking for residents. And in the unlikely case that it doesn't, there are six additional reserved spaces that we have provided on the site, as Seamus mentioned. That concludes my presentation for now. I can take questions later, but I think we're going to turn it over to Tom to talk about the landscaping before we conclude. Thank you.
Please, quiet. Please, quiet.
This chairman hasn't heard this presentation yet.
Good evening. My name is Tom Gressaffo. I'm a landscape architect in Manchester, Connecticut. And the, I'm going to forward this, I believe. Can you forward it? So the planting plan has changed since our last presentation here in Simsbury. And it's simplified in many areas and more effective in other areas as well. Noting that the existing vegetation travels in a line in, in our property, and this will be untouched, runs along here. There are some channels of existing material that will remain here. And especially on the eastern part of the property, there's a very substantial area of existing forest, which will remain. Also, some elevation change back in the corner here that helps give this area in the southeast corner of the property a, a very protected situation. As we're out at the Hot Meadow Drive coming in, we have some eastern junipers up here in the corner and some bayberry that will be pretty solid and block view into the cars here that are not protected by the fences. The fences start here, come all the way down to this area, pick up again here, and go down to nearly the property line in this case. The plant material in the center section here is bayberry as well. And we're seeding this entire slope with a erosion blanket used on top of it to regrow this area, which will be a new slope. That's handled as a combination between Seamus and our team. The existing trees that are going to remain include this large oak and these three large oaks as well in the main island. The island was adjusted to include the bases here. And that's going to be a very important asset you'll see in the renderings for vision into the site. The existing basin out here at the corner is a very shallow basin, but we put river birch, a couple of them in this part, and then a river birch back over here to help beef up the view back into the property as well. And the closer you can put the trees to the source of viewing, obviously, the more effect you can have. We did use service berry at the suggestion of last couple weeks committee, a couple of them here and one over here. So we're giving this a little bit of seclusion as well. This large detention basin or service basin was a little bit smaller than the previous plan, and we have turned it into a bio-retention area with a set of plants you can see here and labeled as rain garden. There is also a lawn swath that comes through this area for passive recreation. And if you go over to this area, there's a pocket really of lawn that's accessed along, from access to this sidewalk to this trail that comes back into this area. On both sides of the building, here and over on this side, it's a solid bed of short blue stem, which is a very native grass that will get two to, two and a half feet in springtime. And when the seeds come out and the long stalks, it will be about four and a half or five feet tall. You can see through them, but it gives the people in the apartment complex privacy so that nobody can really walk next to this effectively and makes a uniform situation here for appreciating the simplicity of the building and the simplicity of this edge. Same thing happens right along this edge as well. There is some holly that's located in these three locations. And winter berry, actually, not holly, I'm sorry. And this helps maintain the privacy that, and knocking out of the car views from the pathway, plus gives us some great color and interest being evergreen. With that, I'll stop. I know that we have some questions probably that'll arise, so.
Just to summarize a few points that were made by our various experts. We have already secured written approval for both public sewer and public water. There is adequate capacity for both available to the site. Your police and fire departments have both reviewed the plan and expressed no concerns for any public health or safety issues. We have continued to address some of the issues that the Inland Wetlands Agency raised and will present some of the changes to the plan to that commission tomorrow evening. And for the most part, the development is in compliance with setbacks and the like. And the opportunity here to set the building back 300 feet really can't be overstated. That provides the building and its residents with privacy and provides a great deal of screening from Hot Meadow. This is an accurate portrayal of the site with the retained oak trees that Tom just mentioned, the river birches to the right as well. So that traversing on Hot Meadow does not really indicate a clear view of the building. As I indicated, we had a neutral recommendation from your design board. We did make some changes at their suggestions. Some members were satisfied, some were not. We did point out to them, and I'll point out to you since it sometimes is a question, HVAC, HVAC units are located on the southeasterly side of the building. That's away from anyone really, except the bike trail. We've provided a six-foot screen to shelter those units. And they're high-performance, high-efficiency units that really do not create any disruption. Solar panels are on the roof behind a parapet, which we're showing here. The solar panels are on an angle, and so it's possible, if you're far enough away from the building, that you may see the edges of some of the solar panels peeking above the parapet. But anywhere near the building, like the view that we have here, they will not be visible at all to anyone. This is another view, just to show where the HVAC units are located relative to the north side of the building. And then this is a view of the building, again, from the northeast corner of the building. There was a question how, what would you see from the bike trail? And this is what you would see going south on the bike trail. Coming north, as Tom indicated, there's a substantial change in grade and a substantial vegetative buffer, as well as a berm, all of which will serve to make the building less visible. This is a description of all the materials used in the building. And again, the function of this building to create a highly efficient, energy-efficient, healthy building is really expressed by the kinds of materials that Vessel uses in developing this product for housing. This was just an example of a building that was built in Trenton. It's a building on the left. And an interior, some people wondered what the units would look like. This is a one-bedroom unit cutaway. And this is what the interior of the units looks like for those people who are concerned about those. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we're happy to answer any questions the commission may have for any of the people who offered information and happy to respond to any questions from the public.
Okay. First, we're going to have questions from the commission. The public can make comments, but we're not going to entertain questions. They can state their question, but we're not going to have a debate. Okay. Thank you.
Just a reminder, go ahead and make sure you get close to those microphones.
Can you hear?
Yes, that's Annecy.
I'll try.
I think that's a big part of the issue, including the presenters.
A couple of questions. I didn't see the EV parking on the renderings. Can you point that out, or are they added on there?
It was added, I saw it.
They're in the northern portion, the first one, two, three, four, five.
I see van.
No, those are EV.
See where those little squares are, Jack? Yeah, at the top there.
In the other rendering, it said EV. It was easier to see.
Oh, so they're not near the building. Okay. Do you have a rendering for the solar panels? And the solar panel information? I didn't see it in our packet with how much energy it will generate because you guys said that it will help out the tenants.
So the solar design is always done on a building. Sorry, Josh Levy, the Executive Vice President of Vessel.
Excuse me.
I'm Josh Levy. I'm the Executive Vice President of Vessel. The, the solar panels on the roof are always designed on a building-by-building basis, based on the trajectory of the sun and everything else like that. The, the expectation based on our design is that it will produce enough energy to, on an annual basis, provide energy to the building. We don't anticipate, therefore, providing any energy bills to our tenants. So their rent will include their electric bills, you know, for those purposes. So we will pay for those as part of the operation of the building, is the answer.
Do you have a solar panel picked out that you've used?
We've, we have a solar panel that we, I believe, we've spec, but it's not finalized for the city of the building yet.
Can you get that to us or to George?
Sure.
That information? That'd be great.
Absolutely.
Sure, you can ask questions.
Thank you very much. And this, my questions are largely directed toward the H&amp;H Engineering Letter of February 24, 2023. If there's someone who could speak to the H&amp;H letter. Is that Seamus?
How are you?
Hi.
How are you?
How are you? So you may recall my comments from the last presentation on this that I'm concerned about parking. And that land use code 221 that was used in the, I think it's the ITE Parking Generation Manual. That 221 code, and I think I heard, I think it was Mr. Levy, say something about, it was suburban, correct?
It was probably Mark.
Mark.
I spoke to that, yes.
So, ah, yes, so good to see you. So that 221 code, suburban. Does that include suburban next to a bus, suburban next to a sidewalk? Because I'm still struggling to understand how, knowing the context of our town, the parking generation would come out at less than one parking spot per unit, knowing that we don't have sidewalks here, knowing that there is no bus. There is a commuter into Hartford bus located, you know, somewhat distant down a bunch of other businesses. But we can't use that bike path as a reliable method of pedestrian ingress and egress because it's not lighted, it has no cameras, it's not snowplowed in the winter. We've had safety concerns. Women have been attacked on the bike paths in the past. So I'm really struggling to understand that. So I'm wondering if it's something about that code that was used or that it was a different suburban setting.
Yeah, so it's, it's similar to what I described with the Traffic Generation Land Use Code. So they, they take a variety of sites around the country. They're, they have some similar, some differing characteristics. Take the counts, they average them all together. But the suburban, the program lets you toggle on and off whether you have access to transit. So in this case, we said no access to transit. There is access to a bike walking path, so, so that does, that does count.
And so if you were to take away that access to the bike path, which suggests to your toggle that pedestrian ingress and egress is available, that would change the number of parking spaces generated by this manual, correct?
No, no, I mean, there's, you can, you can say whether there's access to transit facilities or rail, but the rest of it is just a combination of sites that has varying degrees of pedestrian access to them. So that's why we've, you know, we went out and we compared it to the state statute, which is one space per bedroom, which is a little bit...
We all approve that statute here because we know that our community is different than the statewide usage.
Well, as a comparison, just comparing.
Yeah. But I'm bringing it back to what you just said a minute ago, Mark. You said, you did say that there's something you can toggle on and off, and because there's access to the bike path, that that would have made a difference because there's pedestrian access. So you did say that, so...
I'm saying with transit, there's a difference if there's access to transit or not, with these traffic and parking rates, but the...
So the parking rate that you generated here made an assumption of available transit other than cars, correct?
No, no, we're saying there's, this is a site that's suburban, limited access to transit. It's got vehicular access, and there is, you know, the rate is based on counts at sites that have varying degrees of pedestrian access.
But we don't have any varying degrees of pedestrian access here. We have no pedestrian access here, and the steel...
We have a bike path, the bike path.
But the bike path cannot be used, I mean, you're not a woman. I live right around the corner from here. I won't use that in the middle of the day because we've had women attacked in the middle of the day on the bike path. Our bike path is completely isolated, there are no lights, it's not, there's no snow removal in, in the winter. So it's not like your city where I can just decide and walk down the middle of the street in the middle of the night, because that's safer. You know, there really is a safety concern there, so we really can't consider that bike path as a viable method of pedestrian access to this property. We can't have people walking on Hot Meadow. So I am concerned. Could you, could you run and maybe get to George the number of parking spaces that would be required if you did not consider that there was a method of access to that property?
Well, like I said, this, this is a rate is a combination, so it's got, you know, some don't...
But we aren't a combination, Mark.
Let me just say that of all, so there were, this rate is compiled of counts at 35 other studies around the country. So the highest rate of any of those 35 studies was one space per unit. The rates range from 0.41 space per unit to one space per unit. So 35 different, similar developments around the country were counted, and the highest of the 35 were one space per, per unit.
So I think you're now going to have to agree to disagree here because the developments may have been similar, but I don't think they were similarly situated. So we can move on with the parking thing, we're going to agree to disagree.
Well, I mean, this is, it's, it's the industry standard, you know, this is, this is why transportation engineers go by around the country, so...
So I understand that that's the industry standard, but I'm saying that the combination of varying sites doesn't give us a true, a true measure of what's necessary for this site, and we're going to agree to disagree. But my next question is about, I'm going to jump way ahead to the traffic study. Now, was that you or Seamus?
No, that's me.
That's you?
That's still me.
Okay, you again. All right. So that was performed on October 22nd, October 2022, and you said that I was using the ITE... Am I too close to the microphone, guys? No, okay. Am I really, should I be even closer? Okay. So I just feel really echoey, sorry. So the ITE manual that you used was redone in 2021, correct?
Correct.
And what, what form of, when was the data that was used in the ITE 2021 manual compile? Because I know, if I'm thinking about traffic and what it looked like in 2020 and 2021 in this town, we didn't have any traffic in 2021. So I'm wondering when that data was compiled, and if it's really an accurate representation of what's going on today.
It's a similar case where there were, in this case, 30 other apartment complexes around the country that were counted, and this, this is when it was published. So all of these studies were done prior to COVID, they were done prior to 2020.
Do you know that for a fact?
Oh, yes, yeah.
So how far back did it go?
I haven't picked through every specific, you know, study of those 30. Like, it's basically, it's a graph, it's a plot, and it comes up with an average rate. I don't know the specifics of each of those 30 studies, and, you know, where each one was, or exactly when it was counted, but again, this is...
That's important information for me to have. Is that something that, that you would be able to provide to our planning director?
I would literally probably have to contact the Institute of Transportation Engineers and get the backup data that, you know, from, for that land use code.
Okay.
Again, you know, it's 30 trips is the average.
Okay, so let me ask this a different way. Where, when was the last edition of the ITE manual before 2021? When was the predecessor edition?
The previous was the 10th edition, and don't quote me on the year, but it was maybe three or four years prior to that. And then they've, they've basically come out with a new version every three to four years to keep the data fresh and updated for these land use codes.
Okay.
But...
That is interesting, that, that information I would be really, really interested to know.
And one other, one other thing, in case you, I just wanted to reiterate, we did count that site in West Hartford last year, 243 Steel Road, because I did get a similar question for the last project they did in West Hartford. And as I mentioned, the counts we did at 243 Steel were nearly dead-on with the rate that I'm presenting here. And it's, it's a similar site, in that it's, this site is not downtown by Blueback Square or West Hartford Center, it's closer to St. Joseph's College, so you get a lot of traffic in and out. So it's not a lot of...
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that that's actually an accurate comparison because it is right next to St. Joseph's College, and there's some people who walk to college there. They can walk just one block away on the sidewalk to the bus.
That development was not for college students.
Well, I can walk one block, I can look at it right now. I can walk one block from that apartment complex on a nice sidewalk over to a standing bus that'll come by and take me to work. So I don't think it's a comparable development. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you. Kevin?
Yeah, hi. This has been somewhat of a moving target since you originally submitted the application, so I just wanted to make sure I got all the most recent changes you guys have made. I mean, you've been very cooperative with the various commissions. But one of the things the designer you did was put wood siding on it, or you did for them? Now, you mean, originally you talked about, you know, the sustainability of your exterior, and I was wondering, just what does that do to it?
It's not wood siding, it's the same panel with a different color of the fence.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, and I didn't hear that in the design review presentation, and it was confusing. And the other one is, where did you end up on the fence between you guys and the, and the bike path? What has occurred, so originally it was none, then I thought someone talked about one, and where are we at, none?
There is, there is, there is no fence currently on either side of the bike path proximate to this property. We actually had pictures of that taken, just...
Right, but you're still proposing none, right?
Correct.
Okay. That's, that's all I, I'm just trying to remember, you know, keep up with where you guys are.
The fence that we are proposing is in response to concerns expressed by the Wetlands Agency to protect the wetland area to the north of our site by putting a fence along the top of the retaining wall that Seamus mentioned to create a blocking effect for any headlights as people pull into those parking spaces.
Yeah, and what is that material?
It'll be wood, or I'm sorry, it's a vinyl fence.
Vinyl, okay. Does your facility have a laundry facility in it?
Every unit has its own.
It does, okay. All right, I wasn't, I didn't see that, I think. Okay, I think I'll stop.
I'm actually good. I was going to ask, I mean, I just agree with what Melissa was saying with regard to the parking spaces. I'm, I find it hard to understand how you could manage without one parking space per unit. I don't, but it's been covered, so I think I'm all set. Thanks.
Well, they're proposing one.
Yeah, but, but they were saying, the numbers were saying like 60 some odd was appropriate.
Bruce?
Actually, I have a number of questions, so let me just, I don't know. Just as I look at these drawings, I know it hasn't been commented on yet, but I can't picture how the fire apparatus access works for the east side of this building. And, and even to the south side of the building. What is the plan to get fire apparatus? And if the...
It's on. It's on.
It's turned on, I have a green light.
You're on.
That's it.
So my...
Oh, there you go.
So my question has to do with, as I, let me just repeat the first part of it. I can't understand, I can't envision the fire apparatus access to the east side of this building. And, and I'm concerned, I don't see an access on your property, that's for sure, from the south to the south side of the building either. So I wonder if somebody could comment on that. Apparently, you report that our, our fire chief saw no issues with this building or the site plan they've submitted, but so I'm assuming that the fire marshal's expertise is substantially greater than my own, but could you comment on that or one of the experts?
Sure. I'll make a couple of comments, and then if you want, you can add to it. First of all, it's a sprinklered building, which reassures fire department personnel so that it is not a building that is, that is unprotected. Secondly, what, fired, at least in my experience, been doing this a while, fire departments don't pull their equipment up next to a building, on top of it. They, they would, they want access, ready access, ready access to the building, but they don't need to gain access to all four sides as long as they have physical access, which they, which they do here. So that, at least in my opinion, and I think in the fire marshal's opinion, because we spent some time with him in his review of the plans, the one thing he did ask was to provide a pave, a pavement access out to the bike trail, which we, which we've done. I don't know if George wants to comment further on whether or not the fire marshal had any other comments, but he did not. He found the plan to be satisfactory to him. He's the expert.
Well, maybe you should comment further on what was the purpose of the asphalt from the east side of the property out to the...
I think he wanted, I think he wanted the opportunity to have his equipment go out to the bike trail through that access. But he wanted additional access out to the bike trail, and this afforded an opportunity for that.
So he didn't say it, but then, it sounds like his plan is to come up, put the fire apparatus on the bike path.
I think so. It is, I actually spoke to him, Jim.
Yeah, okay.
I spoke to, I spoke to the fire marshal about that.
In addition, there was, there have been several comments about the electrical, and you know, I'm just, I'm unclear on this thing about the assertions that the tenants will never receive an electrical bill, a bill for electricity. Excuse me, I think he said tonight that they were going to be included in the rent. Well, here, let me ask the experts, Dave. Okay. It's been said that the tenants would not receive electrical bills ever.
That's correct.
And I'm wondering, how, how certain is that? There's 24 units that are the restrictors, the set aside, and then there's the balance or market rate. And so what I'm concerned about is if electricity rises, as, I mean, many people would, you know, argue that it's recent, recent rises have been extraordinary, but in the future, what, the costs are going to rise for the building owner, potentially. And if it rises for the building owner, then somehow you'd think there might be some need to get that back from somebody in order to maintain profit margins, but I'm not in charge of the business affairs. My question really is, do the, what kind of assurance do the tenants get that they're never going to get a bill for anything other than that monthly rent?
So one of the, one of the documents that we have to provide as part of this application is the Housing Affordability Plan, which becomes part of our materials and binds us, just like having to build what we present to you. Obviously, if you approve this plan, this is the plan we will build. In the calculations that are done to determine what the rents will be for affordable units at 80% or 60%, one of the requirements of the state statute is that not only can that person only spend 30% of available income on housing, but that must include the cost of utilities. So that it's not just your rent, it's what you're spending to be in that apartment. And under each of the items that we did, we provided a calculation, we represent and represent to you that the net zero building design of an all-electric building and cost of sewer and water to be included in the rent, so that there is no utility charge for electricity, and the, and the costs of sewer and water are built into that number as well. We are representing that as what we're doing. The way this process works is that there's an external review of our commitment to affordable housing. Every year, the people have to qualify, they have to disclose their income and make sure they're still within the bounds of the affordability, and we have to demonstrate that we are in compliance with the requirements of 830G. That's a continuing obligation. It doesn't start and stop with an approval in the construction of the building. And part of that representation is that these units will not get electric bills. None of the 80 units will get electric bills.
And the annual reexamination of the qualifications to continue on each of the tenants of the 24 units is done by a Vessel staff member?
Typically, there's a third party engaged to do that. Some towns ask the developer to engage a third party. Some towns have a housing authority that takes over that responsibility. It's a function of each town.
Even for privately owned?
Correct.
Building in town? That's interesting. Tell me something else, I couldn't picture from the presentations and also, you know, fairly close examination of the charts. I'm not sure where the snow, when the snowplow is there, you're moving snow around, where's the amount of snow going?
There, again, this is a, sorry, Seamus Moran again. So there's a dash line on the plan here, there's one here in this area, there's another here in this area, and there's another in this back corner. So logistically, when a snowplow comes in, what they'll end up doing is they'll probably, they'll come down here, and they'll push snow into this area, they'll keep coming this way, push more snow here, and the balance of this little area in here, they'll have to push this balance into this, this corner. So there's two spaces here, again, so there's two spaces that we can pile snow onto, there's another six spaces here, and that would end up being, I think it's seven I have shown, so it must be five here and two here, so a reduction of seven where we're actually in excess of 12. So we still have more than the minimum required of parking spaces, so they can fill up, they can add snow in this area, along this shelf in here, and also along this shelf in here. And what's not shown on this plan, you need the original, the hard copy, there's a snow, snow calculation that shows the area of the impervious is, I think it's about 32,000 square feet. After you plow, it's reduced by about 50%. So that area dispersed in these three areas equals a certain amount of volume of height for each snow event. So one inch, three inch, six inch, I believe it went up to 18 inches on the calculations. So that's all at once shown on the calculations. So if an 18-inch snow event, I believe it was four and a half feet of snow, of snowpile in each of these locations dispersed. And I'm sorry, and one more thing, so in that note, which again, it's not on this plan, that says if there's more snow that can't be accommodated on the site, it's responsible... that can't be accommodated on the site, it's a responsibility of the tenant to haul it off the site, which is, I guess is typical in most apartment complexes.
Who's the tenant?
The tenant?
I'm sorry, not the tenant, I'm sorry. The developer, not the tenant. That would be ridiculous.
I'm not sure that explains very clearly what's going to happen along that north border. There's a fence, there's some sort of retaining wall, then there's a plastic fence. How high is that fence?
We expect a thirty-six inch minimum fence.
On top of the wall?
Top of the wall. The wall is that grade, and the fence is three feet, a minimum three feet. If a forty-two inch panel is more convenient.
How's the snow moved on that fence?
We're not planning to plow any snow along that fence. We're expecting vehicles to be parked in that location, so as snow plows come in off hot metal, they'll push the snow into the areas that are designated for the snow.
But what if there's cars in these six spaces?
So, yeah, so these six spaces here, there will be a live-in super almost who oversees the building, and he will be responsible for blocking those six spaces prior to a snow event, similar to...
And the other two?
Yeah, correct. He'd be responsible for blocking those off, prior to a snowstorm.
Just as, to clarify for our audience, there's been a frequent reference to some sort of parking requirement at sixty spaces or seventy space or something like that. The town of Simsbury, that's not what the town of Simsbury requires. Whose standard is that?
Sure, so that, all the numbers that we're looking at, so sixty-two is from the IT, which is the traffic manual. The eighty-three is based on Public Act twenty-nine. So in Connecticut, they require one space per one.
I just wanted to make sure, I was confused.
Sure.
Your reference to what's required was, not Simsbury, it wasn't the state of Connecticut?
Correct. The state of Connecticut requires a maximum required of one per one-bedroom or two per two-bedroom, so a max, I'm sorry, a minimum required of that, which would be eighty-three spaces, and we have ninety-five shown with room for six more. But we don't, sure, you're welcome.
I have more questions, but I'm sensitive to the concerns of our audience about their opportunity to speak. So I'm going to move along to my colleague, Donna.
I just have two quick questions. So, the retention structures? You said something about a filter, a clog filter. So, very briefly, like, what is the, what is the upkeep requirement for that? Because obviously, that filter is going to clog over, if it collects sediment and things like that, and I just want to know, like...
Sure. So there's, it's called a treatment train, which is the fun buzzword that we like to call, call it. So for each of these structures, again, there's a catch basin, I'll go to it here. Oh, not that one, this one here. So each of these catch basins, there's a, first, there's a catch basin with a four-foot sump in the bottom of it, so there's essentially four feet in that first catch basin to trap sediment, which anybody will tell you, the manual will tell you, it's anywhere between fifteen percent of the sediment that, anywhere between fifteen to thirty percent of the sediment in the stormwater will be captured in that first catch basin. There's also an outlet hood, which is just a hood that protects any floatables from getting into the system. And then, once it gets into the isolator row, which the row is just a chamber, a hollow chamber wrapped in a filter fabric, and the maintenance schedule is that, there's an inspection port, and you have to check that twice the first year to see how much sediment buildup there is in the chamber. Once it reaches three inches, there's a, there's a manhole at the end of it, at the end of each unit with pipe. They essentially, they just have a vacuum that goes in. That's why they need the manhole, so you can pop the cover off, put the vacuum into the pump, yeah, and vacuum the sediment out. So they have to review that. So for twice the first year, and then once every year thereafter. And Storm Tech, their manual says it should actually be every seven to ten years. Seven to ten years is what is typical for what a clean-out would require. So we actually think it would be less than that, because the chambers are sized for a hundred-year storm event, versus usually, it's a much lesser storm event. So we think the sediment buildup will be less than seven to ten years, but we are still going to inspect it every year after the first year, which after the first year, it's twice as the first year.
And then I just have a question, and maybe I missed this, but are there any accessible units put aside?
Yeah, the answer is yes, there are accessible units put aside, but actually, all of the units in our buildings are built to universal design standards, as well as to the ANSI standards, so they're all accessible units.
Okay, so I assume the ramp on the ground floor is accessible?
Yes, that is, that's correct.
That's your accessible access?
That is, there's accessible access, and then there's an elevator there for accessibility as well.
Donna?
Just to further comment on your maintenance issue, Inland Wellness Agency suggested that they may add a condition which asks that we provide that annual report to the town on a regular basis, and we said we would do that.
Okay, thank you very much. Since the applicant has given us an extension through April seventeenth, for sure, right?
Absolutely, for sure.
Okay. And since he's suggested that we continue the public hearing, I think we probably should do that. But before that, people want to speak, and I want to reiterate something I said earlier, we've had a number of people come in, I think, since then. That eight-thirty G exempts the application from local zoning regulations, and we must approve it unless there's a verifiable threat to public health or safety that is not susceptible to mitigation. Therefore, we ask you, when you present your case, to prove us, to give us a citation that lets us get that information to support that public safety issue. Even if you wanted us to vote against the application because it's not in character of the neighborhood, the statute has removed that as a reason. So, we would like you to limit your comments to five minutes. We had one person who has contacted us in advance, who asked to speak first because of a disability. Is Amy Allen here?
No, she's at home.
Pardon?
She's at home watching.
Oh, okay. All right. If you want to speak, please come up. Somebody raise their hand. Come up to the podium, state your name and address, and make your comment. And please keep them succinct. We don't know yet.
Hi, good evening. Kevin Beal, twelfth Hampton Circle. Appreciate the commission's allowing us to speak tonight. It feels like a long presentation at the front end. I understand that they have a right to make a presentation, but most folks are here to have the opportunity to speak, so I appreciate the opportunity now. Considering the open nature of the inside of the building, there's screening, from what I understand, in the entry points, and we discussed fire apparatus and exit and egress and sprinkler fire suppression there. I'm wondering if there's a concern about access to the only hallway, the only exit, if there were a fire in the building, and how that might spread, and how somebody might be able to safely exit the building. I also have a concern about the sizing of the waste, you know, area, not only for dripping and other things that might happen in the solid waste management part there, but also the sizing itself for how large and how many units are here. I just think of what looks like to be a couple of bins there, and I know what my family of four goes through in a one-week period. And also, I don't see any forward planning for what's likely to be a requirement for composting from the state in the future. And so I'm wondering what we need to be considering in regard to that, especially considering the area here. And then finally, another concern that I'd like to share, considering the alluvial plain that this exists in, and the management area, the hundred-year storm reference and the water management that's, that exists here, is there any consideration for the increase of flow that's likely, considering how much water actually ends up in this area because of the major river that it goes through, including the Brooks? Thank you for your time.
Next.
I'm Anne McDonald, I'm at Three Tamarack in Hazel Meadow. Sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm usually a little louder. Anyways, I just have a couple of points on the parking.
Anne, we didn't catch your address?
Oh, Three Tamarack in Hazel Meadow.
Okay.
That, I noticed in the book, and I looked it up, the Connecticut Public Act twenty-one, twenty-nine, it does state that there is to be more than one space. I'm not sure, like, what more than one is, but I'm thinking it's probably more than one and one-eighteenth, which was what would be the figure of ninety-five spaces. Also, you're assuming that only maybe ten people, it's going to be double occupancy. So the fact that you say this is family, multifamily, I don't really see the word "family" too much in there, because you're, you're saying that most of these units can't be occupied, somebody with, you know, same-sex partner, or partner, or husband, girlfriend, or anything. They wouldn't necessarily, you don't need a separate bedroom when you're sharing the same bed, basically. So you could have more than ten units with multiple people in them. So, and also, that ITE manual, it may have stated, if I read in the eleventh edition, that as far as the parking ratio goes, that they had to be within one-half mile of a rail station. So we don't really have a rail station here, so everybody's going to have a car. And if it's multiple people in an apartment, we will need more than the ninety-five spaces. And don't forget, during the winter, when it snows, you will automatically, whoop, wipe out twelve spaces. So, and also, like, you're not going to have enough spaces. And people are going to be, they're going to, you're going to be attracting people, like waitresses and things like that, right? So when that waitress gets home at midnight, and they're parked, the parking spaces are all filled, where is she going to go? She's going to have to go out of the parking lot, go all the way down to the commuter lot. Possibly, she could go through Mitchell's and park back where the employees park at Mitchell's, and she's going to have to take that dark path at midnight from either Mitchell's back lot or the commuter lot. And in the, don't forget, in the wintertime, that's not going to be cleared. They don't clear it, there's no cameras on it, it could be slippery, she could fall, it could be heat-to, knock themselves out, nobody's around to help them. So, you know, I don't think, as far as, to me, if you're going to have a building like this, eighty units, you need to be, I guess, have a little more morals and ethics about providing a safe environment for your tenants. You're saying, oh, you can live here, but you can't have a car, I guess, I don't know. So I'm going to move on to my other issue, because I think we've already covered enough of other parking, so. I have a discrepancy I found, and it may have been corrected, but can I have the, are you plugging in? I need this one here. So, just to get started, on their sheet, on their technical appendages, I find that they're using the square footage from both lots in their drainage equation for the storm water management. Now, on the town documents, they are listed as two separate entities. One, listed at Winslow Place at two-point-three-nine acres, in the back by the river. And the street, the four-forty-sixth lot, that is one-point-nine-five acres on the town, but we're just going to say one-nine-seven, because that's what they've been using. So, take breath here. So, oh, the other one, where you have the, my writing with all the math. So, altogether, the two lots equal four-point-six-seven acres together, and that's how they come up with their drainage equations, using two-hundred-and-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-twelve square feet. Now then, if you have two separate lots, and they're taxed separately, and you're only building on one lot, I need this one with the math, then you should only be putting that one lot in the equation of your storm drainage system. So, according to their, I should say, impervious surfaces. So, their old equations on the page, technical report, theirs, they have for their impervious area, their parking would be about twelve-thousand square feet. But when I, the other screen, I had a little squares, little thing, I estimated their parking to be approximately, hold on, about thirty-eight thousand square feet, instead of their twelve-thousand square feet. And their roof, they say, would be close to five-thousand square feet, but when I did the math on the roof, which is about a hundred-and-fifty-two square feet by ninety-two feet, I come up with fourteen-thousand square feet. So, the total impervious area would be about fifty-two thousand feet. So shouldn't we be using that math in the drainage system that they have going, so that we know that it'll hold enough, and it won't be dumping off into the wetlands? And I think it only, it only, it doesn't filter out everything, so, I don't know. Also, you're going to have to count it, it's going to dump, if it's not going to hold enough. So just quick, let's see. And also, if you're figuring the impervious areas, they're covering more than sixty percent of that piece of property with impervious materials. So it's all, most of it's going to have to go into the drainage system. So, let's say it rains two inches. So, you're going to end up with about sixty-five thousand gallons of water with just two inches of rain. I know they've added a couple more drainage systems, but sixty-five thousand gallons of water is like thirteen tractor-trailers full of water. So are those systems going to hold thirteen thousand gallons of water? And also, in their geo-report, it showed that the soil was poorly drained or kind of saturated, so if it's a leach system, it's kind of like a paper towel, you can only pour so much water on it before it, like, leaks out. But, and I don't know if the town had caught up with the numbers, but if you have two separate lots, and they're two separate entities, and you're paying taxes separately, they should not be able to include the river lot in their equations for the storm drain, because the river lot is not going to drain across the bike path and into their parking lot and into the storm drain, so. Okay, so I know a lot of other people want to speak, I could go on for another twenty minutes, but hopefully...
Thank you.
My name is Toby Winters, one-eleven Old Farms Road, Simsbury. I'd like to ask the applicant if they've done a demographic profile of people who live in affordable housing here in Simsbury or surrounding towns.
Excuse me, sorry. You have to address the commission?
Well, I'd like to ask the commission if they know about the demographics that the applicant has done.
Do you have a specific question about the demographics?
I'd like to know what they think they will be.
In terms of what? What dimension?
In terms of the affordable, the people who live in affordable housing, whether it's here in Simsbury or other, you know, surrounding towns.
Okay, but they, according to the state statute, have to have fifteen percent of the units available for people who make sixty percent or less.
I don't think...
And fifty percent, fifteen percent for eighty percent or less.
Well, the issue here is, traffic generation is a function of the demographics of the unit of the apartment complex. So you need to have some idea that the, and I don't know where on the site plan where the elevators are for the residents. But in a community where you have a mix of demographics in terms of ages, there are a lot of affordable housing, from my observation, includes a lot of people who are elderly, they have people who have mobility issues, and they need elevators, it's a safety issue. If this complex does not include elevators...
It does.
It does.
It does?
Yes.
The residents?
Yep.
So, the elderly people will have accessibility?
Yes.
Now, on the traffic issue, is there any assurance that the demographic profile of these five-hundred-square-foot apartments reflects the demographics of typical complex where you have families who generate less traffic at peak work times? To what extent are there couples who often will be heading in different directions? So to the extent that a good portion of the complex includes... So to the extent that a good portion of the complex includes couples, and they're generating more than one-vehicle traffic in the peak hours and returning home, it also assumes that the complex, the people who live there, don't entertain, don't have friends over. So that when everybody is there in the evening, and they have visitors, where are they going to park? So I think there's some issues here. And I don't think that the two, or three, two-family units is what I would call family-friendly in terms of the mix that they're proposing. So there is an issue that affordable, I think, would also include a sense of the community that you're serving, and to what extent are they serving a community that's representative of the people who live in affordable housing in this area. I would think that the profile of the people who would be living in this apartment, you know, would be similar. So they may have a target audience, but I'm not quite sure whether it doesn't, in some sense, the way it's designed, we tend to discriminate against people who already live in communities in the area. That they are, you know, seeking a target audience that doesn't represent the profile of the people who live here. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Toby. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes.
Hi, can you hear me all right?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Ellen Gilbert, is that better?
Yes.
Okay. I live at 126 Hot Meadow Street, which is the Talke Acres community. We are, I think, sixty-five townhouses down the street. I have three issues. One is the concern of the noise of the air conditioners on the south end of the building. They, it looked like they were lined up on the ground level. Immediately, across from those air conditioners is somebody who is a single person living in a single home. Something needs to be done to be able to contain the noise of those air conditioners. Secondly, I understand there's no plan for a generator for the elevator. And if that's the case, that is a huge safety issue, because you'll have people who will not be able to take the stairs, going down four flights of stairs. The other thing is, if the affordable housing statute says they cannot get a utility bill, I'm a single person in a condominium, and my water bill is $350 a year. Now, are the other tenants of that building, who are not affordable housing, are they going to absorb the tax bill? How is that going to be handled? So those are my three questions. And I have some other issues, but I'll save those for tomorrow night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mark Scully, 29 Notch Road in West Simsbury. I'd like to speak, actually, in my capacity as chair of the Sustainability Committee in Simsbury, and really to share with you the comments and the discussion that was held at a recent Sustainability Committee meeting, that Josh from the Vessel came to our meeting and really fielded questions from the group. We wish every developer would come to the Sustainability Committee and share their plans in the way that they did. And we had tremendous enthusiasm for, and there's a lot of issues that I can't comment on, I won't comment on parking or many other issues, but in terms of the energy performance of that building, we're very excited about what they're trying to do. First of all, it is an all-electric building. It is a very efficient, high-performance variable refrigerant flow system. They will not be consuming fossil fuels, which is what we need to be doing, we need to get off of fossil fuels. It's a very high-performance building envelope, which is really most important, right? So the heating load and the cooling load will be lower anyway. They're incorporating solar as much as they can on the site, whether it's enough to meet the entire needs of the building isn't the point, but they are doing what they can on solar. And another small feature that is really important, we think, is that tenants get feedback on their energy performance, right? So again, there's lots of issues we can't comment on, but we would commend the Vessel for coming to us to share their issues, and we commend the energy aspects of this building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Hi.
Yes.
My name is Carmen Monaco, and I live at 9 Nutmeg Court in the Hazel Meadow community. Aside from the heart attack I'm going to get every time I pull into my driveway looking at this monstrosity, of course, we can't deal with that because of the statute, I'd like to request that the planning commission, the zoning commission, consider determining how many rental units already exist in the town of Simsbury that are Section Eight and also RAP, which constitute 2.5 HUEs, which are units' equivalent value per unit type. That's a lot of units of affordable housing. And we are overwhelmed with apartments here in Simsbury over the past ten years, ridiculously so. And it seems like no attempt was made to seriously consider meeting that ten percent requirement. That ten percent is becoming more and more invisible to reach as we continue to develop apartments here in this town. If the town, if the commission would consider trying to determine from all the existing apartments within the Simsbury town, all of it, Wheaton, Tarawell, all of these little towns, and determine what number of Section Eight and RAP are these apartments, we may be very close to being able to at least appeal from our attorney, so we can catch up with what's going on here. I mean, I think our town needs, seriously needs senior disabled housing and disabled housing, or just plain old senior subsidized housing. That's what we need desperately for our citizens that pay big taxes to live here and then end up having to leave because they don't qualify for Section Eight, they don't qualify for RAP, they don't qualify for anything. I would really request that you seriously consider finding a way to appeal and put a stop to this for a while, until we can catch up. We have other properties that would be much cheaper and much more suitable for what Vessel is attempting. For example, the blight over there in Wagner, that's a perfect property. We don't have to worry about wetlands, we don't have to worry about a brook, we don't have to worry about traffic, we don't have to worry about anything. But that's an option. There are so many other areas where.
Excuse me, Carmen, there are a lot of people here who are interested in, what we're doing is commenting on this application and trying to identify something that might have public hearing or public safety or public health concerns that are sufficient and can't be mitigated, so that we can vote on this application negatively if we choose. We need those information. So I understand your concerns about a lot of things, but it's important to get everybody to have their comments and opportunities to give us information that we can use.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Johnson. I live at 21 Stillwood Chase, a half a mile away from this Section Eight subsidized development. I want to thank all the residents for coming out tonight, because if we see this go through, local politics is dead. Bottom line, they've taken it out of your commission's authority, and they're taking it away from us. I understand the law's in place, got it? I've lived in a subdivision like this in central Virginia, and I'm not going to go through my experiences, but whatever you're thinking, it came to fruition. This is not right. And this is the second issue I've seen this committee consider, and I know you're saying your hands are tied. Here's an article in September 4, 2022, New York Times, speaking of how Fairfield, New Canaan, and Greenwich are successfully defeating these odds. So you guys, you guys might want to lay down, that's what it sounds like, Mr. Chairman, but we're not. I didn't work my ass off for decades and save a lot of money to come live here, only to have people like you and you tell me, I can't live in a community that I want to live in. It's not right. It's beyond not fair. To ask me to spend $16,000 in property taxes, which I do, and tell me I have to live here, and have people that aren't going to pay the market value nor electricity bills? That's ridiculous. This meeting wasn't even scheduled during the last design review board until people showed up. And you give them ninety minutes because you don't want to hear from us? You don't think we can see through this deliberate approach just to wear us down?
Excuse me.
It's wrong. It's wrong, and you need to hear this. Not enough people in this town speak up. The great article from the New York Times speaks to how they're defeating this. Or the article, I don't know. All right?
Thank you.
My name is David Parasol. I live at 1 River View Circle. What's that? My name is David.
Thank you.
I live at 1 River View Circle. The follow-on on the previous gentleman, when 83060 was created, it was created to specifically address communities that don't have a large number of low-income housing. We have, what, 500 in Simsbury? That is a large number. Maybe not in West Hartford or East Hartford. And they're making efforts to change the law. Jonathan Steinberg and others want to change the law so that predatory developers, as they put it, don't come in and bully their way in. So for safety, I really focus in, well, look at the trail right there. That's the trail that the fire department is going to have fire trucks go down to get to the east side of the condo complex. I'm on that trail with my kid on a bike, a stroller with the baby. How's the fire engine going to get on there? Where do I go? Where do I go at that point? That trail is used heavily throughout the years, throughout the months. How's the fire department going to get in to the property? Has anyone seen the backside? They created like a road to their limit line. There's about thirty feet from the limit line of the road they're creating, the topography's just all grass, it's swamp to tie in to the bike path. And is that what we want to do? Put a fire engine on a bike path? Just because they're trying to fit 100 pounds into a one-pound bucket? Thank you.
Excuse me, I didn't get your last name.
Parasol.
Parasol. Thank you, David.
Ray Gagny, moved into 434 Hot Meadow Street, house just south of the buildings. My concerns are the light from the building shining on my yard, bugs from the Catch Basin that they're going to form and produce and breed bugs that'll go in my yard, noise from the HVAC systems are on the south side, right 10 feet from my yard, and crime from the amount of people there. I'm going to have to lock my doors, lock my cars, or move in here not to do that. That's what I have to say.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Calamertis. I live at 11 West Borough in Wheaton. I have no affiliation with Vessel, its advisors, or this application, yet I'm here to speak in favor of this application. I have five points I'd like to make. First, affordable housing is just. It is the right thing to do. We should allow low- to moderate-income people to live in this community affordably. We should be striving to create a welcoming community for everybody. Second, there is a real need for affordable housing in Simsbury. You all have heard the statistics. We are behind. We should be looking for all opportunities to expand affordable housing in Simsbury. Third, Vessel is bringing its capital, its risk, an efficient design, a mixed design that is going to create a community of both market rate and affordable rate. This is not 100% affordable rate. This is a mixed community. And it's at an adequate location on a major thoroughfare. My fourth point is, let's not let the perfect get in the way of the good. If we're looking for the perfect, we're never going to find it. And instead, what is going to happen is, there is going to be more applications that don't partner with the town. We've heard about Vessel working as much as it can with the town to address any issues that are raised. Finally, many folks are trying to discredit the analysis of the professional engineers involved. And I want to note that professional engineers have an ethics. They have to hold the paramount, the safety and the health and the welfare of the public as its highest regard. They have to issue public statements only in an objective and truthful manner. They have to avoid any deception, and they have to conduct themselves honorably, responsibly, ethically, and lawfully, so to enhance the honor and reputation and usefulness of their profession. They are trained in this element, and we need to rely on the standards and the activities that they put forth as a profession, and that we have regulated both in the state and the town and through industry standards. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Hi, Catherine Beal, 12 Hampton Circle. So my first question just has to do with something simple, but I think can be a safety issue. It's just about mail. Where does the mail go? Where do packages go? There needs to be space for 80 packages to arrive, I don't know, Christmas, I look at my doorstep, you know, Amazon's delivering constantly, and there needs to be a place. And I'm worried that it's going to pile up in a very tiny vestibule, and people coming off the elevators, people trying to come in and out of the building are going to be tripping over packages. And it's a simple thing, and it sounds petty, but I think that the point is that there's so many little things like this that just haven't been thought through, and it's a huge concern for me. I believe that we should have affordable housing here, but I think that we owe people better than a half-baked solution, than something that was put together, that was based on a different design, that a greedy developer has taken this design, they've turned all the units sideways, and, you know, I have a background in architecture, and I can look at their Trenton project, the only single project that's been completed to date. It's the only example that we have of a built unit. It has six units in it, there are multiple bedrooms. We could really use something like that here, we could have a really nice place for families to come and be part of this town. But that's not what's happening here. It got greedy, and it became 80 units. It doesn't have to be 80 units, but it is. And I think it does a disservice to the people that we could get here in Simsbury. It's not the right thing, and it's not fully baked. The mechanical systems, they showed up between two weeks ago and tonight. And so it's like all these little things, we don't know what the solar panels look like on the roof. Well, if it's a product and you're placing it, I think you do know. And so I feel like there's just not enough information, it just doesn't feel like a completed, thought-through project. And it's disappointing to me that we've waited this long in Simsbury to do it, and now we're not doing it right when we do it.
Diane Nash, 5 Berrywood in Simsbury. I'm going to try to make it easy for you guys. If this was not an affordable housing project, and it came before you in zoning, would you approve the safety, the parking, the density, the drainage, any of the other things? approve the safety, the parking, the density, the drainage, any of the other things you're being asked to look at? And I would suggest to you, the answer is no. And what we're trying to do is make this community both affordable and diverse. Well, the big problem with affordability is frankly our schools. And we wouldn't ruin our schools in order to make our town more affordable. The other thing we're doing, excuse me, is ruining our look, our open spaces, our lack of density. We have 30% of our properties is open space. It allows people of all color, race, creed, background to use 30% of Simsbury's property. We pay the taxes on it. We bought it and preserved it so everybody could use it and they don't have to live here. We are the most diverse community that exists in the Farmington Valley. So look at this, this application. As if it weren't affordable, and would you approve it under your zoning regulations? Because affordable housing shouldn't be less of a requirement for safety and drainage and parking as any other housing.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Roffus. I live at 14 Nutmeg Court, about 150 feet away from the proposed building. It is literally my backyard, as well as four other residents, I believe, who are here tonight. I want to start off saying that I am a product of affordable housing. I am a single parent, middle school teacher at Hartford Public Schools, Go MLK. There is no way that I would be able to live in this town without the development that I personally live in at this moment. That is a development that was done respectfully and ethically of this community that gave people like me an opportunity to give my children a good, safe environment and good schools to raise them. I don't know how. I know some people are very creative. I just don't know how you could raise a family in a 500-square-foot. I mean, people do it in New York, but that's why. I do have a couple things, other concerns. One, the team likes to speak in absolutes. There was absolutely no light spillage. There will be absolutely no issues with the garbage. Bears are very tricky. And you're also relying on 80 different human beings, possibly more, to respectfully and responsibly put their garbage in these dumpsters, which is right next to a wetland. There will be spillage. There's the absolute visibility. You will never see this building. Five months out of the year, there's no foliage. You're going to see it. You're going to see all of it. The second thing about the snow, this is a safety concern. From what I noticed on the diagram, one of the locations of the snow pileup was right next to Hot Meadow Street. We all giggled a little bit when they said, a certain amount of snow, it's only going to result in a 44-inch pile, because we all know that's not what it's going to be. And with that pile being right on Hot Meadow Street, you're creating essentially a huge mountain of snow. On a curve, you're not going to be able to see traffic coming or going, and there's going to be a lot of accidents in that location. My next concern, and this is a very personal concern for me, is the water. There is an extreme amount of stress on Second Brook to divert all of the water from the developments from the Powder Forest into the Farmington River. On three occasions, Second Brook has backed up so far, it has flooded my basement three times. Three times. You are now going to add another structure with less open space, once again, relying on their absolute that there will be no way that these cistern systems are going to malfunction or can't do whatever it is. That's my concern. So that brings me to, what about my health? What about my safety? When my home is flooding due to this construction, who's going to pay for the mold mitigation? Who's going to pay for the damages? I'm not going to get insurance. And then, I'm also, what about my financial health? I will never, ever be able to move. So I will be literally put into a home that is being damaged, that I have to stay in. And I'm not talking innuendos or magical. It has happened. And with the increased construction, you're putting more stress on Second Brook, which puts more stress on Farmington River, everything like that, which will destroy my home than homes of my three other neighbors as well. What about our health? What about our safety? And then the last question. I am, like I said, completely for affordable housing. But how many of you honestly look yourself in the mirror and want this in your backyard? Be honest with yourself.
I'm Harold Bender at 6 Marine Drive in Simsbury. I have a couple, one comment. The second or third slide in their presentation does show elevator with generator. My one other concern is that there seems to be a lack of planning for future. I'm assuming a facility like that should last more than one or two generations. Europe is limiting internal combustion cars. Any imports, import cars from Europe are going to be electric. California is limiting internal combustion cars. How many states are going to follow that? But generally speaking, when you're looking at that kind of development, you're looking at a two- or three-generation timeframe. I shouldn't say generation in that case, but probably an eight, 20-to-30-year timeframe. You're not going to have internal combustion cars. They got, what, nine charging stations? Do you think that's going to be enough for 80 homes or 80 apartments? I don't think so. Nine stations are good right now. I don't have an issue with that. But there's absolutely no planning, no infrastructure for putting more electric in, other than digging up the parking lot and dealing with all the stormwater pieces. Put the lines in now so that you can tap into them later, make it easier. To me, that's saving a future. Thank you.
Thank you, Harold.
Hi, I'm Catherine Godickson. I live in 7 Nutmeg Court.
Catherine what?
Godickson.
Godickson, okay. Thank you, Catherine.
This topic has been peripherally discussed, but I'm going to talk about it anyway. My comments will pertain to the parking lot and snow removal issues as it affects placement of snow and drainage. According to their original site maps, the developers did not designate space for this important requirement. It just was never indicated that they had space for snow removal. They've decided to use the two drainage basins that remain. There's the small one near the entrance and the one along the front of the building on the right, which will be the main receptacle. Clearing an entire parking lot will generate a huge pile of snow, even after a modest snowfall. This main location will block the first-floor apartment windows and destroy any plantings that are placed there. The weight, the freezing temperatures, the road treatment will hasten their demise. The same conditions will kill whatever is in the other smaller basin as well. This is a poor plan. If temperatures stay cold, the snow hardens, doesn't melt, and will impede clearing for the next storm, piling it even higher. Have they planned for this? I don't know. Will the tenants be asked to move their cars to let the snow plow do its job? If so, where will they go? Or will it be when each tenant leaves after they push off all the snow from the car, one at a time? Will the plow pull the snow out of the spaces and move it to the basins, or push it to the back of the space? It will be tempting to push it to the edge and over the bank, I'm afraid. Winters in New England are unpredictable, and it often rains after it snows, which creates enormous amounts of water. There's a concern by us as adjacent homeowners that the storage chambers will not be able to handle this, especially since the entire parking lot is tipped toward the northeast corner of our property, right at the top of the bank of Second Brook. If the chambers reach capacity, the water will be dumped down our bank into Second Brook, leaving flooding and erosion in its wake. The soil around the brook is not very stable. There's the entrance of Second Brook when it's flooded, as it enters our property. So you can see, you know, the brook is not a static system. It can be very gentle, or it can be raging like that, or it can really back up into two large ponds when it can't enter the Farmington. So the constant leaching of their storm tech chambers will only make the soil less secure because it's already not that stable. Do you have the ones of the trees? Okay. And we just fear that it's going to destabilize the bank. Our last snowfall caused three trees to uproot and fall on the bank as Second Brook enters our property. And it wasn't that big a storm. I mean, we didn't get that much snow. So you can see that the soil is kind of delicate there. And there was the other one that actually fell right into the, into the brook. Do you have that one? And that was just recently, whenever we had our last snowfall. Yeah, there it is. That's the entrance as it enters our property underneath Route 10. So that's, you know, a large concern of ours. Our last snowfall caused that. We also have a photo of just one of the many large piles of snow in our association from a small area of pavement after the last snowfall, which again, was not anything major. Do you have that? So that's one, only one pile, and because we have, we have 26 acres, so we have plenty of, you know, open space. The site of the proposed development is on less than two acres, covered with mostly impervious surface with very little open space and next to an important wetland. We are not convinced that their storm management system can come close to handling it. Vessel's presentations have appeared neat and comprehensive, only by ignoring the true complexities involving the negative impact of this development, especially with no zoning restrictions. If we had the time and money, we could hire our own experts to prove our point of view. Their group of experts makes assurances that our legitimate concerns regarding impact of this development are easily remedied. They are not omission, excuse me, omniscient. It is their best guess. If they guess wrong, we will pay the price.
Hello, my name is Deborah Robb. I live at 15 Nutmeg Court, which is directly north of this property. And I will keep my comments brief because most of my neighbors have already spoken to a lot of these issues. But one of our biggest concerns is the light and noise pollution that this is going to cause. And I know that's probably more concerned with the wetlands, but this is regarding our health as well. We sit approximately 20 feet below the elevation of where they're going to put this building. And as Kelly, my neighbor, mentioned, there is no foliage on those trees approximately five months of the year, sometimes six. I don't know how they can tell us that the light is not going to spill over into the wetlands and over into our community of Hazel Meadow. One of the reasons I bought this property was because of the nice elevation of the look. You can sit there at night, look out the windows, and you can see the stars up in the sky. This property is going to, it's going to destroy all of that. There is no possible way you can have a four-story lighted staircase on our side of the property that is not going to spill over onto the wetlands, which is going to disrupt the environment, the animals, and everybody who lives there. The parking lot illumination, they keep saying there's no trespass for the light. It's just not simply possible with a space that's that large. That 40-foot staircase is going to just, it's going to obliterate everything. I don't know how they can say that it won't. It's going to, I do believe the developer said it would cast a glow. There's no way, when you look at that staircase, that it casts a glow. You're also putting it against a white reflective surface of the building, and that is just going to do nothing but magnify that. You know, one of the, I moved from Simsbury almost 25 years ago to Florida. One of the reasons I moved back was because you can't see a star in the sky down there. Here, as this community has developed and grown, they've done it in measured steps. They're trying to put, as one gentleman put it, a 10-pound bag of something into a one-pound surface, and it just doesn't fit. And they're using 830G. They're exploiting 830G to put this on a piece of property where this development just does not fit. It has nothing to do with the affordable housing. We are all for affordable housing, but we're not going to do it. We don't want to do it at the expense of all of us who already live here destroying our homes. The noise pollution is another huge thing. They've talked about how this will be 100% quiet, again, as Kelly said, and as Kathy said, they speak in absolutes. There's no way possible that this will not have a noise element to it. Again, I moved from Florida because across the street from me was a, they put in a mini mall, and I swear to you, all I heard was vibrations all night long. And that's exactly what we're going to hear again with this building in this community. You're taking an urban building and you're trying to put it into a residential community where a single-family house now stands. I don't know how anybody can say that that's going to fit. It simply is not. Those power lines, the power lines, the HVAC system, and I'm sorry, but those solar panels, there is no way that that's going to power that building. We've spoken to solar experts, and they've laughed at us and said, that's just simply not possible. If you covered that entire building in solar panels, it still wouldn't, it still would not create a zero-net utility bill. So where is that expense going to come from? They're going to raise the rents of the other people who live there. So, that said, I ask you to please consider what this is going to do to the health of the people and the animals and the environment already there. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
Susan Van Cleef, 6 Mallard Circle. I also want to talk about snow. I've had a lot of experience with snow. I lived in a place that had a parking lot like this. Is it, can you hear me now? Can you?
A little torn.
Speak way up, Susan.
Oh, okay. Can you hear me now? I feel like I'm back in my classroom. Okay. So, I lived in an apartment building with a parking lot like this. I am just convinced that there isn't enough place to put the snow, but you also have to think about the fact is, once that plow goes behind your car, you have to shovel it out. And, I mean, I just couldn't imagine, as we say, maybe an older person would want to live in here. I just can't imagine doing that. But also, where are the people who go out and shovel? The shovel that they've taken out of their, their little apartment because they don't have a storage place to put it, and the one that's dirty and gross, and they're going to go out there and they're going to put that snow over that little three-foot wall and down into the brook? Because they have nowhere else to put the snow that's full of salt and full of grease. And they need to get their car out, and they need to go to work. And there's a car on this side and a car on that side, and there's nowhere to put the snow. And I just really think it's like, we've been talking about snow all day, but as somebody who also ended up not being able to park in their parking lot because there was nowhere to put the snow, and had to move their car into a road, and was pretty lucky, there was a road. I wouldn't have to go to Mitchell's or to the commuter lot. It really, really seems like a minor thing, but it is extremely major. And the other thing about snow is, right now, in my condo, there's about a 50-by-30-foot area right in front of my condo. There's three. There's three, there's three garages there. They come in and plow that last snowstorm. That little area, that's a foot of snow. So that's a really important thing. And just one last comment. I hope you listen to these people. This is the most irresponsible and disrespectful project I have seen in years. And I was on the Clean Energy Task Force. They do have a nice little energy plan, but we've never seen it work. We've never seen it in action. But this is really, really sad, that this is what it's come to. Because we didn't get enough 830G in, in the past by actually requiring developments to do it. So I hope, I don't know what you can do about this, but I hope you all discuss this and think about it. Thank you.
Susan Messino, 41 Madison Lane. Can people hear me?
Yes.
So, I don't say this lightly, but I think the way this statute, 30G, is written and interpreted, is itself a threat to public health and safety. Because it allows us to run over critical ecological lifelines that really need to be our top priority, and damage people who are in our community right now. That's not acceptable. Our highest values right now should be community and taking care of each other, and taking care of our ecology, and the things we all need long-term. So the aspects of this statute that damage those things are really damaging. I think the whole narrative on affordable housing suffers from a lack of critical thinking. Because is it really more buildings we need, or more places that people can afford? And if you look at how much Connecticut's population has gone up versus how many housing units have increased, there's not a huge mismatch. Yet why is every community across the country right now being beaten over the head to install more affordable housing, instead of having programs that allow all the buildings that are now empty from the pandemic? Or existing housing, which is actually affordable, to count toward this affordable housing goal? It's really duplicitous. The other thing is, everyone thinks this is about, you know, a grassroots effort, et cetera. Look at the article in the Connecticut Examiner. It's the real estate industry that is funding this entire affordable housing narrative through Desegregate Connecticut. So we can't kid ourselves that it's about our community finding common sense solutions. This is being foisted upon us. And I've even heard people say the only way to get more affordable housing in Simsbury is to build more. Look how much we've already built. All that has done is increase the amount of affordable housing we're supposed to put in. So it's like a Ponzi scheme. I want to mention also, and I've thought about this a lot, because I was the co-chair, and I'm still a member, of the Science and Technology Working Group for the Governor's Council on Climate Change. There's no question, when we talk about our global crises for ecology and climate, we need to reduce, reuse, recycle, and that counts for buildings. We're doing bad math. We don't count the carbon that was put into that building that we're tearing down. We don't count all kinds of things. So we're trying to meet these carbon goals, but we're doing bad math. The final thing I'll say, because my profession is actually, is a neuroscientist, and I really care about mental health, and your community is such a foundation of mental health and taking care of each other, including finding common sense solutions for people who are disabled, on limited incomes, young, and starting out. These are each different kinds of solutions that we need to think about more specifically. But I want to mention one thing from my role as the Vice President of the Simsbury Grange. All of our programs are usually donation-based. We have people come from all over. If you want to see a really diverse crowd on all kinds of fronts, please come to the Grange. But I'll tell you, people come to the Grange, and they beg me. They say, "We love coming to Simsbury so much, because it's so beautiful. Please don't let this turn into West Hartford." They're like desperate, desperate about it. And what we realize is, looking at applications like this, is with the current rules for this 830G and the current rules we have in place, there is nothing we can do to prevent it. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. It's good. Now, I want to remind you that we're to speak on the application, and to give us reasons why, if it is, and support for whatever the hazard is that we're talking about. So we have a lot of people here, and everybody has to listen, so go ahead.
Dave. My name is John Ricchio. I live over on Aspenwood, which is not too far away. My name is John Ricchio, and I live on Aspenwood. Is that okay? Hello, hello, hello? Okay, I'm sorry. So my only, I've heard a lot of great questions tonight, and I agree with many of them, but the one thing that I haven't heard, I heard someone from the, Melissa, bring it up, was with regard to where do people walk, where do people, you know, if they're going to be living in this complex, if they're going to be living in this complex, where are they going? So I have a few properties that I've invested in myself, and I have had Section 8 people, and I know some of them were good, and some of them were not. But it wasn't up to my discretion, once I allowed them in, the state takes over and literally plugs people in based on their needs. And a lot of times, what I've experienced in my rentals is being a nice person, wanting three people in and help them out, but it ends up where they'll have multiple children. And where are those children going to play? They're not going to play in a 500-square-foot apartment. And they will be in there, I can guarantee it, based on my experiences. And not only that, but you have no control over where these kids are going to be playing. And are they going to get hurt? They're on a main street, there's no walkways. I think that's the major issue here, as far as I can see. But there are a lot of good issues that were brought up. That's the major one. It's going to affect us and our community in a not-so-pleasant way when people start getting hurt. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, John. One more, and then I'm going to suggest that we continue the hearing.
If I can go after him, that would be good. A really quick two minutes.
I'm sorry, what?
I'll have about a two-minute presentation after him, if that's okay?
He wants to be heard tonight.
We're going to have another hearing in two weeks at our next meeting, if we vote for it, and I think we will. So, go ahead.
Board members?
I'm going to be very brief.
Name and address, please.
3 Hazel Court, Simsbury. Gordon McInerney.
Okay, Gordon.
That's Irish. I'll be very, very brief. The proposal is very interesting. I am in favor of real affordable housing, where people not as fortunate as me can actually live in the town they're working in. All I want to say is, it's an interesting-looking project, building, maybe I'll end up there someday, I don't know. But I'll tell you this, I only approve it if it's 20 units. 20 units is a little, makes a little more common sense than 80 freaking units. 20 units, I'm with you. 40 is a stretch, and 80 is ridiculously crazy. That's it. Easy, right?
Thank you, Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for giving me an opportunity to speak regarding 446 Hot Meadow Street. My name is Janine Christensen, and I am actually one of the owners of 446 Hot Meadow Street. Myself and my husband have attended every single meeting regarding this proposal. We've listened to everyone intently.
We can't hear you. We're not hearing you very well, Janine.
Myself and my husband, Nord, have attended every single hearing regarding this proposal. I'll be brief, but I do have several points that I would like to make. Nord and I are both lifetime residents of Simsbury. We've both worked our lifetimes here in Simsbury, and Nord is almost 70 years here, and I'm almost 60 years here. This discussion about attainable housing is not a new topic for us. This discussion has been going on in town back to when Bill Volker was the Town Planner. It's a topic that needs to be discussed, it's a topic that needs to be addressed. We are having a housing crisis here in Connecticut. Read the Hartford Current. There's weekly articles about it. For years, going back, we've had this discussion. It's been evidenced in the Shorette Study that was done here in town, that we need this type of housing. This type of housing satisfies the need for elderly, it's accessible, it's wheelchair-accessible, it's handicap-accessible, whatever the politically correct term is today, I don't know. When this property was purchased by my parents 15 years ago, they purchased it with the idea that they were going to do something further with it, because at that time, they realized that there was a need in town for more elderly housing and housing that young people could afford. Young people entering the workplace as young professionals. Nord and I know this from our own experience, because we manage and own Simsmore Square. We get calls weekly, at least three times a week, if not daily, for this type of housing. We are very conservative in our pricing for our apartments that we own and rent now, but we do not have enough to satisfy the demand. The type of housing that we need is for the young people that are coming into the workforce. It's young engineers coming to work at Ensign Bickford. It's mechanics that work for Mitchell Pontiac. It's tradespeople. The tradespeople that we deal with on a regular basis cannot find workers to work for them. They cannot, because they cannot afford to live in this town. They're trying to enter the workforce. The people that are our age, that are nearing retirement age, cannot find people to work for them. They're flat out, they have, they're three to four to five months, six months out, if you need something done at your house. Nord, my father was actually ahead of his time, because he started using mixed-use development in the early '70s. He's developed Simsmore Square that's within walking distance of local businesses and residents, and he's provided many amenities to this town. This town provides many amenities. We think that we've been good neighbors. Considering the expressed need by the town to us for the current and potential residents of Simsbury, we purchased this property with the idea that we were going to do something with it. Now is the time. We would like other young people to have the same opportunities that Nord and I have. Nord's first house?
Let me say this, my first house in this town, it was 20 years old. It was number 30, Hazel Meadow Place. I looked across the street, and I asked the Realtor, "What's going to happen with that garden section across the street from my house?" "Oh, nothing." Within six months, there were the chicken coops, as they were called, built directly across from my house. Every one of us who lived in those original houses on Hazel Meadows, a few of which still live there, decided that we weren't going to oppose it, because there was a real need for those, even though we didn't want to look at the chicken coops, literally, that were being built across the street.
What makes this work is the design of this building.
That we decided that just because we had ours, doesn't mean we have to deny someone else there. We feel that this development will give the young teacher, the young engineer at DB, the mechanic at Mitchell's, the restaurant worker, will give them the opportunity to rent a small apartment in this town. I have seven, 400, 600 square-foot apartments. One of those people has been in there 25 years. She refuses to leave. She is a teacher at Simsbury High School.
She's a director. Music.
She's a music at Simsbury High School. I could rent 100 of those tomorrow if I had them, if they were priced even remotely reasonable, not the prices that are up in high broad.
Yes, yes, we have many other apartments here in town. We've been inundated with apartments, but they're all in the $2,000-$3,000 range. People cannot possibly achieve that, not when they're of retirement age and trying to downsize, and not when they're entering the workforce. What makes this work is the design of this building. It's eco-friendly, it's sustainable, it's green, it's a low-carbon footprint. If conventional construction could achieve this, somebody would have done it by now. Do we really want to have all these things, eco-friendly, sustainable, green, and a low-carbon footprint? Or are we just saying that we want to have it because it's trendy? Vessel has done their homework, they've done their research, they're professionals in what they do. They're trying to provide housing in an attainable way that makes economic sense. They plan on using the existing grade, they're retaining as much of the natural landscape as possible, and in my opinion, because I know this property probably better than anyone else here, I think this building is going to tuck in there very nicely. Respectfully, and I would appreciate a little bit more respect from the people in Hazel Meadow to listen to what I have to say, because I've listened to all of you. I do think that there's been a fair amount of people that have been rude here tonight. I respectfully request that the board accept our proposal, because it's innovative, it's forward-thinking, it's something I learned growing up in this business that has, that was taught to me. It's attainable, it's achievable, it's accessible, and for many reasons, it absolutely helps solve, it's part of the solution. It's part of the solution for the existing crisis that we have here in Connecticut. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Alway's Bridge, 3 Lorna Drive, in West Simsbury. First of all, I can't blame the developer for jumping on an opportunity like this here, because it's a subsidized arrangement, provided and basically forced on us by the state with their 830G statute. And it's a sad commentary, though, that they had to pick a, not just a commercial site, but they had to pick on a single-family site, which is clearly zoned for R15, single-family. And my question is, what's the board going to be doing in this regard, following that particular gentleman's pointing out the New York Times article that the Gold Coast towns seem to be able to get around 830G? Do we have no backbone here? Is it just that we're bought, or what? Now, I'm not blaming you guys personally, okay? But I want to know who's leading the charge here? And I'm looking particularly at the chair to see what is it going to be take to get beyond just bowing down to the state on their mandate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I? Pardon?
At the next meeting, it's fine. So you said the two cases.
Yeah, I'd like to have a motion to continue the public hearing. To the next.
Yes. There's a draft there, sir. There's a draft.
Way to do it? I can do it.
Yes.
Okay. I move to continue the public hearing on ZC 23-03. Um, I move to continue the public hearing on ZC 23-03, 446 Hop Meadow Street, an application of Vessel Technologies for an 830G site plan approval of an 80-unit multifamily development at the zoning commission's regular meeting on Monday, April 3, 2023, at the Town of Simsbury Library.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry six-nothing. Thank you very much. Yes.
Yeah, can we... Can we do it?
No, let's not change it.
That would be quiet. No.
Sorry.
I would not change. If you change this meeting time, then we've got to re-advertise. It's not a regular meeting if you change the time.
Oh, okay.
Right. Okay, we have one.
Let me see if I can change the time.
Excuse me. Excuse me. We have a meeting here that we have to conclude. Thank you. It's 20 minutes of 10. We have a witching hour in our rules at 10 o'clock. So we'd like to finish our meeting. Thank you for leaving quietly. I think we missed that. Oh, no, they're in at 9:00. We have these, application 22-32 of the Simsbury Zoning Commission. There's a staff report. And we have... We have recommendation of the town attorney.
Tell them to take the conversations outside.
Please take your conversations outside. Recommendation of the town attorney is that we vote to ban cannabis retail operations as it is. We will have plenty of time to do a institute of regulation if, for some reason, a referendum were to approve it, or the Board of Selectmen's moratorium expires and they don't extend it. So the attorney says we have plenty of time. We don't have to worry about getting applications before we're ready. So that's the first part of it. Second part of it is the manufacturing of cannabis. I'm sorry, there are two places where we make the change to ban it. Then we have to remove the moratorium language. And I believe that we had agreed that we would not require Curaleaf to come back to us for a special exception.
Correct.
To change the use.
Change the use.
There is no difference between manufacturing recreational marijuana and medicinal.
Right.
So it's not really a change in use. So the state has actually changed the definition. So I think we just adopt the states and allow them to continue doing what they're doing and increase their retail market, their sale to retail.
Right.
It's not, we're not allowing them to do retail at that location.
Correct.
So it's not a change in the use.
Okay. Does this conform to the...
Yeah.
So we had this conversation, and we just wanted to make sure that we were clear, that staff was clear, that it was the intent of the zoning commission to either require a new special exception for medicinal or to not require. And I know we're talking about Curaleaf. So in that case, option two is a motion that clarifies it by adding an additional sentence that says, "Existing uses currently classified as medical marijuana production facilities," that's the definition today, "in the zoning regulations are not required to obtain a new special exception in order to enter retail markets unless an improvement to the site requires a site plan amendment." So that's really the trigger. If there was an amendment, if there was an increase in square footage, anything like that, then a new special or revised special exception would be required. So that's what option two says.
Does this preclude them from the plans that they came for last year?
No, it would make them a legal use under the revised regulations.
And they do not have to come in based on what was proposed and approved last year? Because they did do an addition.
It's been approved.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
That would carry. That would remain.
Yeah, great.
That would remain, yes.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm not in favor of giving Curaleaf the opportunity to come back to us to go into retail sales. No. Their license is for medicinal production, you know, medical use. And I don't think we should give them an opportunity to go into retail, when retail means only the... No, it has to do with the use. It's just recreational. So they'll go from medicinal to recreational if this thing is what you want.
You're talking about production?
Yes. Only, it's who they sell it to. It's not... They sell it to either retailers of... I know, but if we're saying we don't want Simsbury to be in the business more than we already are, then you can't have them going...
I'm in favor of allowing them.
Without a special exception. I guess, I'm not totally versed in a special exception, but I can't, I find it difficult. Their production operation doesn't change at all. It's just who they ship it to.
Right.
Packaging.
Yeah, it does change. It gives them a bigger market. Yes, but, you know, how are we going to regulate a bigger market? By not letting them have it. Oh, I'm not in favor of that.
Yeah.
I'm not in favor of trying to...
More producing. I disagree, Bruce. I think we are allowing...
You're invited to that.
Yeah, we're allowing production right now, and we should continue to allow the production.
I'm not saying we shouldn't. I'm saying you're advocating that we give them a bigger opportunity than what they were licensed for some years ago.
It's the same product.
And they have now.
Same footprint, same...
I think the difference is, they are not increasing their production facility, therefore they can't produce that much more. It's just a matter of who they're selling it to. But they're still producing the same general amount.
If they can't produce more in the same building, what's the concern? Medical markets can increase over time, too, as people get older and there are issues and reasons for it.
Well, people may not, people, once it's available retail, people may no longer go get a prescription for medicinal and want to just buy retail, so the medicinal market may be straight.
Well, the people are financial concerns, Melissa. The medicinal's not subject to sales tax. There's a 6% tax on it.
So you're trying to stay consistent with your sales.
Right, right.
We're not allowing retail sales. We're allowing production. But he's saying it encourages retail sales. So do we need to take a vote on this?
Yes, we need to vote.
Absolutely. I mean, that's what we brought it to. I mean, we've... So, yeah, just to clarify, the changes, based on the Board of Selectmen's action, the changes that you see here from when you closed the public hearing, again, we can only make changes based on public testimony and those kinds of actions. That is, we clearly now say that the retail portion is prohibited townwide in all districts. Not permitted, retail sales. But the industrial hasn't really changed. We've always stated that industrial production, that entire list of uses would be permitted by special exception in I-1 and I-2. The only thing we were just trying to clarify was what to do with the existing Curaleaf, which is approved for medicinal under our current zone. So one option would be to make them come back for a special exception, or two, to not and say that that use is most similar to those existing uses that we've defined, and cannabis establishments intended for both retail and/or medical markets would be permitted.
So I guess, basically, Bruce, you're in favor of option one. Dave, you're in favor of option two. So which one do we vote on?
Well, the question is, well, I think that most of us are in favor of option two. Is that right?
Correct.
Yes, 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 yes. So can I have a motion to include the top and option two?
Can we go back to the comment?
The top is the other one.
We can comment after we make the motion.
Are we taking public comments?
I think if you're...
Okay.
Only seated members can participate, should be able to participate, since the public hearing is closed.
Right.
Okay.
So you're evading the... My point is, we don't have an obligation morally or ethically or legally to give Curaleaf a bigger opportunity than we're given. We're not going to give them others. We're not going to give them anybody to give. At least for the state. Okay, Bruce. We understand your position. There are several other voters who I think favor option two. So let's have a motion. What? We're going to have a motion?
Dave, before we vote on this, just to clarify, the town attorney is advising us to ban the sale?
Correct.
Okay. Will we have time?
Yes, he has said we have time.
If an application comes in when the Board of Selectmen moratorium ends? He's saying we'll have time?
We'll have time.
To write a zoning regulation? Okay.
We have the regulation.
Right, but we're not approving it.
But we have to have a public hearing, and we have to, we need, we need like a week or so.
So should we do that at our next meeting?
It's nothing to do with the meeting.
No, let's, if I...
Wait a minute.
So the recommendation from both the town planner and the town attorney is that you can't include kind of caveats if this were to happen or if that were to happen. You can't do that. So we would simply need to be vigilant in advance of either a referendum. Let's say, we would know if there was a referendum for a vote up or down in September. The way the language is written is, you know, the election would be on November 4th or 5th or 6th or 7th. And if it were approved, it is effective the first Monday in December. So we would schedule a public hearing in advance, we would advertise in advance, and if we had to cancel, we would cancel. But we, so you'll have to rely on staff to be ready to do that. Same thing in 18 months if the Board of Selectmen, when their prohibition is getting closer, will obviously need to be in contact with the town manager and the First Selectmen's office to understand perhaps what they plan to do, either by extending or letting it, you know, letting it cease. And by the same token, we would just prepare in advance to advertise a public hearing and get language in place. So we would do that process again.
Okay.
Is that clear?
We have plenty of time to do it. Request, Judge, I just want to clarify. Your memo says staff is confident the commission would have time. It does not say the town attorney said the commission will have time. At least it's significant time. Enough time.
I am more than happy to say, I am telling you, you will have enough time.
Okay, so the town attorney did say that. That's your advice. We did not say the town attorney would say that. Yes, you did.
Yeah, we did, Dave.
I'm sorry, the town attorney said to ban it.
So I've spoken with the town attorney, and we both agree that we believe there will be time to put a process in place. Yes.
But there isn't a prohibition on doing it now?
There is, because what language would you use today? We can't approve it, because we have a Board of Selectmen who has prohibited, and we cannot, this body cannot pass a regulation that would be contrary to the Board of Selectmen action.
We can't pass a regulation that says that in the event...
You cannot, well...
That's a legal thing?
The town attorney recommended that you do not do that.
But is that a recommendation, or you cannot?
Melissa? Let's get this done. Okay. Can I have a motion?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve application ZC 22-32, a text amendment to allow certain cannabis establishments in industrial zones I-1 and I-2, and to prohibit retail cannabis establishments in all zoning districts in the Town of Simsbury, as reflected in the zoning amendment framework, version 4 dated March 20, 2021, and based on the public record and the following findings. One, the text amendment is consistent with the economic development policies found in the plan of conservation and development, and with the following note added to section 5.5 for clarification. Existing uses currently classified as medical marijuana production facilities and the zoning regulations are not required to obtain a new special exception in order to enter retail markets unless an improvement to the site requires a site plan amendment. Effective date of these regulations shall be April 5, 2023.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Well, I think I made my point, but I'm totally opposed to giving Curaleaf a bigger opportunity than what their license provides for and what they came to Simsbury for. We don't have to, and I don't want to. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, but at once, just so you know, the package I'm on had the framework as dated March 21st. I changed that date to March 20th, and that's what was handed out tonight, and I placed that on, just for clarification's sake, at the wrong date.
And what's the effective date of this?
April 5.
April 5.
Gives us enough time to add, to post it in there.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five. Opposed? Bruce is opposed, so it passes 5 to 1, with Bruce being the opposition, being the negative We've been dealing with cannabis for a long time. Okay, we... Can we defer the dark skies discussion to next time? I think we should do that.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, we didn't get the dark skies recommendation. Did we get the letter?
We just got the letter, yeah. We're for the recommendation.
There's no recommendation.
We didn't get the attachment.
We didn't get the attachment.
Yeah, there was no attachment. It was just a letter. I told Joe about it today.
Okay. So we need to defer this.
We'll get that soon.
Okay. This is commission correspondence.
Could we defer this to the next meeting?
Yes.
It's given to you as correspondence.
Okay. It's on the agenda. Great.
Then I move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry six-nothing.